Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing. City of Rock Falls, in accordance with state statute, is required to have a public hearing to receive written or oral comments from citizens regarding a proposed tax levy increase for the city of Rock Falls. And certainly, I know we have some people here that are here to listen, and I'm sure there are perhaps one or two people that will want to address the council. With your permission, what I'd like to do is to call on our city administrator before I call for comments, to present the tax levy and go through a small presentation, and then we'll proceed with the audience if there's anyone that wishes to speak. Administrator Blacker?
You didn't tell me it was supposed to be small. It could be an hour.
Okay.
All right. What I like to do is start off with the little tax bill 101, or tax levy 101, to remind everyone what the line items that we levy for are used for. I have a copy of our levy up on the screen, and the first line item is corporate. The corporate line item is levied for general corporate purposes that are used by the municipality. It can be used for infrastructure projects, capital, anything that the city sees fit to use it for. The next line item is IMRF, which is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. This is used to pay the city's share of the IMRF personnel's pension. The IMRF personnel here at the city do pay in on their pension, and then the city contributes as well.
Ms. Blacker, I hate to interrupt you, but do you have the ability to make that? Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Fire protection, this is used in the general operation of the fire department to provide fire protection for residents within the city limits. The fire pension is used to pay the city's share of fire personnel's pension, sorry. The police protection is used in general operation of the police department to provide police protection for residents within the city limits. Tort. The tort money is used to pay our liability and property insurance premiums for the city. These funds can also be used to pay tort judgments or settlements, and can be used to create a reserve to pay for these items. Social Security and Medicare, used to meet the cost of participating in the Social Security and federal Medicare programs for the city staff. Workers' comp is used to pay for insurance premiums that provide protection to the city for workers' comp claims and/or judgments. Fire protection and rescue equipment, which is the bottom section down here, and this can be used whenever you do a lease or a bond issue for fire suppression vehicles. And one of the things to remember on that is when you do put a capital lease or a bond issue for emergency equipment on there, that does not go against our 5 percent increase that causes the truth in taxation hearing. We have traditionally bonded out, I think the city has done it for many years, the fire equipment that we've purchased, and that's how it's been paid for. I apologize that you can't see that clearly up there for everyone. This is the option four that the council directed me to present as the tax levy tonight, and it has an increase of 15.32 percent, and then if you add the fire equipment in, the increase is 16.12 percent over last year's rate. I will note that option four, held back, is $126,621 short of our full obligation. That money is going to be made up by the new funds that are coming in from the rural fire protection district, and those funds will be used to fully fund the fire pension. This is the breakdown of the percentages of all those line items in the levy, and you can see right now the police and fire pension alone is 51 percent of the entire levy. If you put in the IMRF into there, the total pensions for the city have now reached 57 percent of the levied amount. Now, we're going to talk about, a little bit about, our tax bills when they come in the mail. This is a general overview. The percentages aren't exact on everybody's tax bill. It depends on which grade school district you're in, but this is pretty close to what everybody should be. In Whiteside County, 10 percent of your tax, your total tax bill, goes to the county. And then 60 percent goes for whatever grade school district you're in, and the Rock Falls Township High School. Sauk Valley Community College is 3 percent of your overall tax bill. The library is 2 percent. Coloma Park District is 5 and 1/2 percent. SSA, which is the Special Service Area 1, which provides emergency medical services, is 2 percent. Coloma Township is 2 percent. Coloma Township Road is 1 percent, and the city of Rock Falls is currently at 14 and What a city increase of 16.12 percent means to you as a property owner in Rock Falls. What we've said in the past is we've used the median fair market value of the homes in Rock Falls, which is currently $71,000. The net taxable value on your tax bill will show up as 23,666. And in this case, with the 16.12 percent increase, your tax bill would go up $65 on the Rock Falls line item over and above what it was last year. I took a tax bill. This is actually a property owned by one of our aldermen. This property's fair market value is 115,500, and you can see up here that the net taxable value is actually $27,000. The city of Rock Falls line item is taxed at 1.7095 percent on this tax bill, and that's $470.08 out of $3,000 tax bill. The tax rate, if this levy goes through, will go from 1.9757 up from the 1.7095, which it currently is. Which, on average, it's going to be about, on this tax bill, it showed up at $63.88 higher, is what it would be. So, it went from 500, it went up to $533.96. On your overall tax bill, what I think confuses people is they hear 16 percent property tax increase, and they think it's on their entire bill instead of on one line item. What this really represents is a 2 percent increase in your overall property tax bill. And if anyone has any questions about the tax bills up here, if you'd hold that until I get done with the whole presentation. As I've stated every year for the last five years, the fire and police pensions are reaching an unsustainable level. This year, it is glaringly apparent for us to continue funding our fire and police pension obligations. The mechanism for funding these pensions will have to be changed. Only one option that we presented allows us to fully fund the pensions, allows us to not raise, only one option that I presented this year allowed us to not raise taxes, but it did not fully fund the pensions, which would cost us much more in the long run. I want to make sure to clarify the fact that the past Rock Falls administrations have not shirked their pension responsibilities, nor can this present burden be laid at the feet of the policemen or firemen who serve our citizens. This burden falls squarely on the Illinois General Assembly's attempt to make all municipalities responsible for the shortcomings of those cities that chose to forego their pension responsibilities, much as the state of Illinois has done. This year, Senate Bill 777 was passed, which only benefited the city of Chicago and did nothing for the other 1,298 municipalities in Illinois. Senate Bill 777 amended the Chicago fire and police pensions, and where the rest of us have to have our pensions fully funded by the year 2014, or 90 percent funded by the year 2040, the city of Chicago gets 15 extra years, which tremendously alleviates their pension burden. Governor Rauner did veto this legislation after it was passed by the General Assembly. However, the General Assembly overrode his veto. In checking our local legislator, how our local legislators voted, our state senator did not vote in favor of the override, even though he himself is a firefighter. On the other hand, Representative Smitty did come to Chicago's rescue. One might ask themselves what his plans were, instead of are, were, to help the city, the cities in his own district with their pension burdens. I would encourage everyone in Rock Falls to contact your legislators, especially when we have a new one coming in who does have a municipal background, of what their plans are to help us with our pension burdens. Finally, I cannot stress enough that this burden should not be laid at the feet of our police and firefighters, or past administrations here in Rock Falls. However, the cause of our burden is irrelevant and needs to be dealt with in a substantive way going forward.
Just to add a couple of things real quickly to that, her statements. There have been provisions put in the state statutes that call for if a municipality, under this new formulation of the pensions, fails to meet its actuarial responsibility or the minimum responsibility that they have, that those pension boards of those particular police and fire services can by notify the Department of Revenue and clearly show that here's what they levied, but we never got it. The state Department of Revenue will take any funds that the city would be getting through sales tax or other, any other forms of revenue that we would get, and make that pension plan whole, and then we would, in the end result, have less money, in this case, for general fund operations, which could very easily lead to a reduction in services. So, it's a no-win situation. The legislation passed is something that made it equal for everybody, even though it was not fair. Then they pass a bill that gives the Chicago firefighters and police officers a different out, and then they put in something that says, if you don't do this dreadful thing, we will take money away from you that you use for other operations within the city. So, it was a no-win situation that we were put in. There is an option, and that is to go with a minimum amount that can be paid, but in talking to various sources, it's very apparent that if you only go with the minimum and not with the maximum that is advised, the differential between the minimum and maximum will carry over to next year's calculations, in addition to the calculations for next year. So, sooner or later, this would need to be addressed, and it's better to address it now and have what little savings we may see from future big hikes by addressing it right up front when we need to.
One of the other things I want to point out, it is the fire and police pensions that are the greatest burden to us, obviously, with our tax levy, and we knew that there were changes coming, but I think that what I have up there on the screen now shows just how this has snowballed. Over the past 10 years, the fire pension has gone up 1,861 percent. And the police pension has gone up 246 percent. This is not something that we created back when these low amounts, $19,000, $40,000, $80,000, were being paid towards those pensions. The pension was one of the highest rated in the state. It was actually, at one time, over 100 percent funded. I believe it was at 104 percent funded at its highest. So, you can see that any increase of 1,800 percent, something's going to have to give. I'll take any questions that the council may have now.
Well, at this time, I think what we'll do is, this is a public hearing. We've presented some information, so I would ask at this time, if there's anyone present in the audience that's here for the hearing and would like to address the council, to please step forward, make your statement, ask any questions relevant to what was just presented, and we'll be more than happy to answer those for you.
Ed Mulvaney, Rock Falls. I don't envy your job. I've sat where you guys are currently sitting. Just a couple of observations, and these are not critical observations. Tonight, the county is also looking at a couple of items that, and if an individual, not that I would be doing that, but if an individual wanted to speak there and speak here, it would be impossible to do, because yours is at 6 o'clock, theirs is at 6:30. I would ask that maybe in the future, you guys might want to coordinate something so that if somebody has an opportunity or wants that opportunity, they could do, because Special Service 1 is a line item in yours as well as the county's, and the county's proposal is going to be much greater than your impact. Robin did a wonderful job as far as presenting things. I would also comment that in the future, maybe when you were going to do this, instead of using that $71,000, just go with EAB, because most people don't understand that $71,000 is mean, but they do see their tax bill, and that makes, you know, perfect sense. So, when I look in my case, and I would say to my, to you guys, whatever, I guess I'm a fortunate individual. I do have the money to pay the tax increases. You know, last year's tax increase, in my case, was $89. This year is going to be another $130, and that's going to continue and continue, whatever. You know, I'm thankful for that. However, on the other side, I work for a food pantry, and the number of people that we see coming in our food pantry is significant. Last year alone, in providing utility assistance for individuals living in Rock Falls, was about $11,000. Some of those are homeowners, property owners, where they actually pay the taxes. However, some are renters. Now, we'll say, well, they're renters, and so they don't pay the tax. Well, if I own property and I'm renting it, and I want to make sure I keep my bottom line where it is, I'm passing any tax rate increase, and I'm going to put it on my renters, and my renters are going to be paying more for that. So, they are indirectly affected by whatever taxes happens. 219 families, you know, received that $11,000, you know, just from our food pantry alone. There were only, you know, one of 12, not all of them, have food and financial means to support what we do. 1,320 families, which represent 3,600 individuals in Rock Falls, receive food from us alone. I'm not counting Trinity, I'm not counting Fish, okay, who they also get assistance from there. I would just ask, you know, as far as a point of consideration, that maybe a lot of times when we make these decisions, we look at the hard numbers and we see where the numbers are, but maybe do we ask ourselves, what is the impact on individuals who are going to have to foot that bill? I mean, if it's a necessary evil, but maybe just as a, I guess, a moral compass, maybe we want to, or not just you guys, but everybody, you know, who makes these decisions, look from that perspective. I can say that in the years I've been working at our food pantry, it's genuinely a sobering experience to see who comes in and how embarrassed a lot of times these people are that they can't make ends meet, and I just feel, my heart goes out to them when I realize that they're obviously going to have fewer dollars, I mean, maybe minimal, okay? But every dollar to them is a much greater impact than a dollar it would be to me, much greater. Anyway, that's my piece.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
It's not an infield job, so I wish you the best.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council in regard to the hearing? Council members? Any comments or last thoughts from you? Hearing none. We'll adjourn the public hearing.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Reitzel?
Present.
Alderman Logan?
Present.
Alderman Snow?
Present.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Present.
Alderman Shuneman?
Present.
Alderman Kluckler?
Present.
Alderman Folsen?
Present.
Seven present, you have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is audience request. Is there anyone in the audience that would like the opportunity to address the council on an issue? If so, please step forward. Seeing none. The next item is a presentation this evening from CHLLP, which is our auditing firm for the city, and it's my pleasure to introduce to you Carla Pasquale, who headed up the auditing team and will report on the city's audit for us. Thank you for being here, Carla.
Thank you. You should have received four different, or four different reports. We actually issued five reports as a result of the audit. The larger of the documents is your annual financial report, which summarizes the financial information of the city. You have your auditor's communication to the city council, which are the required communications we need to make to you at the end of the audit, a management letter, a TIF compliance report, and then we'll be providing the comptroller's annual financial report that gets submitted with the state comptroller. I just want to highlight a few items within a few of these documents, and then open it up to any questions that you might have. I'm going to start with the larger document, the annual financial report. Starting on page one is our independent auditor's report. Even though we assist you in preparing this document, this is the only part of the document that belongs to us as auditors. It summarizes what our responsibilities are and what your responsibilities as management are. I'm glad to announce that we issued an unmodified opinion, which is commonly referred to as a clean opinion. That means there's no material misstatements contained within this document. Going along with your conversation tonight, starting on page four, we implemented Gatsby Statement Number 68 this year, and that relates to all of your pension plans. In the past, we reported the pension liabilities or assets based on a funding basis, which meant if you were required to contribute $100,000 in any given year, and you contributed less or more than that, you would report either an asset or a liability. In the past, because the city had overfunded their pension plans related to the police and fire pension plans, last year you had a pension asset. With the implementation of Gatsby 68, we now report on a full fund, or a full liability perspective, meaning whatever assets you've accumulated for your projected benefits in the future, we report as a liability on your financial statements. Because you're not 100 percent funded then, on page five, you'll see three new items under the liabilities, net pension liability for IMRF, police pension, and firefighter's pension plans. Because of the way the statement requires that you fund the pension plans, each of these reported a liability rather than an asset. And then if you move down to net position, now in your governmental activities, you have a negative unrestricted net position of $5.8 million. Compared to the prior year, you had a positive unrestricted of $2.5 million, so that really impacted your unrestricted net position. And then if you turn to page seven, the majority of this prior period adjustment at the bottom of page seven relates to recording the beginning balances of those pension liabilities. And then turning to page 10, just looking at how your general fund ended for the year. Before any transfers, issuance of debt certificates, and sales of assets, the general fund ended with a negative $172,000, that your expenditures were exceeded your revenues. And then if you turn to page, page 14 and 15, this summarizes the financial results of your proprietary funds or your utility funds for the main part, and if you look at the operating income, that'll tell you exactly where your operations ended, and for all of those funds, ended with a negative $740,000. And then if you turn to page 54, we had a lot of discussions during the audit about making sure that you were using the right discount rate for your police and fire pension plans, and if you look on page 54 and 62, there's a comparison of using your current discount rate of 7 percent, for instance, for the police pension plan, and where your net pension liability ends at $6.1 million. If you were to use a discount rate of 1 percent less, that liability would increase to $7.8 million. If you used 1 percent higher, that would decrease to $4.7 million. So, that'll kind of demonstrate to you why using the proper discount rate is so important. You don't want to understate or overstate your liability. You want to make sure that you're using a rate that really reflects what your long-term expected rate of return is. Are there any questions on the annual financial report? I'll turn then to the auditor's communication to the city council, and just go over a few of those required communications, starting on page two. Again, we need to tell you if any of your accounting policies have changed, and this year we did implement Gatsby Statement Number 68 and 71, which both related to your pension plans. If there's any estimates contained in this, in the annual financial report that are sensitive and could change within the coming year, we need to report that to you. We feel that the assumptions used in your post-employment benefit plan, actuarial valuation, as well as your police and fire pension actuarial valuations, are assumptions that, you know, if rates change or expected lives of those beneficiaries change, those assumptions could change over the next year or in the next coming years, and does have an impact on the liabilities that you're reporting. Turning to page three, I want to congratulate the city management this year. They endeavored into recording all of their accrual entries at the end of the fiscal year rather than hiring us to do that or relying on their auditors to record those adjustments. We did propose a few audit adjustments related to that, but I would expect that in the first year of them trying to do that. There was a lot of progress made in that area, and I expect the number of proposed audit adjustments to decrease in the coming years. And then turning to page 11. As part of our audit, we always review the key control processes of the city in order to assess our audit risk. We don't look at every single control structure throughout the city, just those that we feel would impact our audit. If we see strong control processes, we'll reduce our testing, and likewise, if we see kind of weak internal control structures, then we'll increase our audit testing. We just had a few recommendations, starting on page 12. Credit cards is one area that we trust, test transactions every single year because of the risk identified with credit cards. It's easier to make purchases, but it's also easier for employees to make improper purchases. You do have a good, strong credit card policy, and we noted just a few items that didn't comply with the policy. Just reminding you to educate your employees on an annual basis as to the policy, what it is, what it requires, and that they follow that. You have several funds that accumulate costs, such as your health insurance and your GISIT functions, and then you allocate the costs out to the various funds. functions, and then you allocate the costs out to the various funds. We noticed that there was just a few allocations that were not made, and therefore, there were some balances left in those funds. And the purpose of those is to make sure that you're centrally accounting for them, but then recording the total cost within the individual funds. It wasn't a material amount, but just something for you to monitor and make sure those costs get allocated. Last year, we identified that you have a foreign fire insurance fund, and because of the requirements of Gatsby Statement Number 14, you're required to include that in the city's reporting entity. That's something that's accumulated at the end of the year, and we're just suggesting that you include that in your general ledger throughout the year. We reviewed your expenditure and bidding procedures and did some testing to make sure that your transactions were following those procedures that you've established. Again, we just noticed a few transactions that didn't comply with your policies, and therefore, we're just reminding you to communicate those to the employees and department heads. You've made a lot of progress in your utility billing area, and I expect there will be more within the coming year. One of the items we noted that was your listing of customer deposits didn't reconcile with what was recorded in the general ledger. We assisted you in making an adjustment to true up those amounts, and we're just recommending that you reconcile those on a monthly basis. And then there was an inventory of your utility departments at the end of the year, the inventory they have on hand. There were just a few items that didn't get reconciled with the general ledger. We did that as an audit adjustment, and just reminding you to, again, make sure those amounts agree at the end of the year. And then, starting on page 18, we always review the comments we had in the prior year, letting you know whether the comment had been implemented or still existed. We had a number of comments that were implemented during the year. Number two, the water loss statistics, there was an improvement made in that you only had 25.6% loss in this year. It was much higher in the prior year, about 40% in the prior year. Our benchmark that we see in all the utilities that we audit is 15%, so there's still some room for improvement in there, but, again, there was a huge improvement over the prior And then, I just want to mention, related to your IMRF and social security funds, you blend them as one individual fund. We saw some of the breakout in the revenue and expenditure accounts this year. We'd like you to go back and figure out what the fund balances that belongs to each levy so that we know what's been accumulated for each of those levies, and we can assist you in that endeavor. With that, I'd open it up to any questions that you might have. It was a good audit. The initial field work that we did in July went very smoothly, got kind of hung up in the pension valuations, making sure that the information that was contained in those was consistent with what the city, their funding policies, and their discount rates.
Does anybody have any questions for Carla?
No, just a comment. That was a very comprehensive report.
Well, Carla, it's the second year and working together, and I think that things are getting smoother. We appreciate the effort of your team. They were very professional while they were here, and likewise, the individuals for us that they interacted with noted some definite changes in how things went, so we're very appreciative of that. We very much respect the audit. The audit is the eyes and ears of the public, checking to make sure that we're doing our due diligence in all the variety of things that we have to deal with, not only pensions, and your report suggestions will be taken and implemented. And I think I was glad to hear you allow us to have a little bit of sunshine that, you know, the things that were made before we have made improvements. And I'm sure we'll meet with those.
Just a tremendous improvement over the first year. You know, and first years are always tough, but just the effort that your departments put into making sure that the audit goes smoothly.
Mr. Kuhlmeier?
Yes, I sort of think of them as our financial police. Yes.
Nothing else from anyone?
Well, I would just say that we must be doing a great job because we decided not to levy any funds for next year's audit, so remember that when we receive the bill. We're just taking another copy of what we have.
Okay.
Nothing else? Carla, thank you so much for joining us this evening. We appreciate it. We were supposed to have another presentation this evening from Dan Kobe from the MWM Consulting Group to report actually on the actuarial reports and the pensions. He could not make it tonight, but will be with us at the next city council meeting, so we'll look forward to that. Moving down then, community affairs. I don't see a representative from the chamber here. Next item will be the consent agenda. Any members of the council wish to have any of the items removed for individual discussion? If not, Mr. Clerk?
Approval of the minutes of the November 1st, 2016 regular council meeting. Approval of the bills as presented. Proclamation for Brayden Hamblin, 2016 Class 1A IHSA State Champion. Proclamation, Small Business Saturday, November 26th, 2016. Approval of Resolution 2016 751, MFT General Maintenance. Approval of Resolution 2016 752, Obligation Retirement Resolution for MFT Alternative Bond Series 2012.
Make a motion. Approve the consent agenda as read. Second motion. Motion made by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Shuneman to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Before we go on to ordinance for first readings after complimenting Carla on her proposal, I think that we need to have a motion to approve the audit as presented.
I'm so moved.
Before we pay for it, right? So, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the FY 2016 audit as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Folsom. Sorry about that, folks. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. Moving on now, we'll go to ordinances for first reading. We have quite a few. We will do these as a package. Once again, the Chair would ask, is there any of the ordinances on for reading, first reading this evening, that anyone would like to remove for individual discussion?
I have a question.
Sir.
Number five, are we calling this FY 16 or 17? It is.
Oh, for the...
Property tax levy?
Let me see. Oh, yeah, that should be, it's tax levy, actually, this is the 2016 tax levy that should not have said fiscal year in front of it.
Okay.
Sir, you may want to remove item number four. Mr. Reitzel recuse himself for consideration.
The general obligation, mind?
Is that the riverfront to the bond?
Yes, it is. All right, so item four will be removed. Mr. Clerk, if you would, read.
Approval of ordinance 2016 2287, tax abatement for debt service on $1,555,000 general obligation, alternate bonds, electric system, alternate revenue source, series 2010. Approval of ordinance 2016 2288, tax abatement for debt service on $720,000 general obligation, alternate bonds, MFT alternate revenue source, series 2012. Approval of ordinance 2016 2289, tax abatement for debt service on $2,427,000 GO debt certificates, series 2016. And approval of ordinance 2016 2291, 2016 property tax levy.
Make a motion that the ordinances be approved for first reading.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Snow, for the ordinances for first reading for item one, two, three, and five as read. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of those four items for ordinance for first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number four, if you would, please.
Approval of ordinance 2016 2290, tax abatement for debt service on $2,115,000 general obligation, alternate bonds, alternate revenue source, series 2016.
And Mr. Reitzel is recused from this vote.
Move for the approval of ordinance 2016 2290 as read.
Second a motion. Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Shuneman, for the approval of ordinance 2016 2290 as presented. Any further questions? Hearing none, roll call. Excuse me. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? City Administrator?
Nothing else tonight, Your Honor.
Information correspondence. Mr. Ardini?
Some meeting date changes this month. The Ordnance License Personnel Safety Committee meeting will be this Thursday at 5:30. Electric Committee has been moved to the 29th at 8:15 a.m. Finance Insurance Investment Committee has been moved to the 29th at 5:00 p.m., and the Police Fire Committee has been moved to December 1st at 4:30 p.m. And just another reminder, filing dates for the April 4th consolidated election are December 12th through December 19th. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Reese?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Brian, thank you for waiting over there.
I just wanted to give you another update on the construction on the riverfront. As you can probably tell, Phase 1 is now basically complete. Earlier today, I got the final numbers, I don't want to say they're 100% final, but the final numbers of the cost of construction for Phase 1. We still have to compare our numbers with the contractor, Martin, but I think we'll probably be pretty close. Total cost of construction for Phase 1 was $611,156,000. The approved construction amounts, the original bid amount was $491,380. Change order number one was not to exceed $140,000. The total of those two is $631,380. So Phase 1 was essentially completed for about $20,000, less than the approved construction amounts. So I think it turned out well. Green grass is coming up. I think everybody's pretty happy with the result. It looks pretty good, so it looks very nice. Phase 2, if you haven't been down there, if you have, I'm not telling you anything you probably don't already know, but the bench seating for the venue now is complete. The foundations for the music venue, those are all in now, those are complete. The foundation for the control building is in, that's complete. Most of the vendor pads are in. Contractor's been pushing around and placing black dirt, mostly on the north side of the project, closer to the river, get that done because there's still some sidewalk that needs to go in. We have to have the black dirt in before he puts those sidewalks in. Most of the light poles and the conduits are in, and I think overall, I think everything's been going fairly well on Phase 2 also, as far as I know, so.
Anybody have any questions for Brian?
Yeah, questions.
I understand, if I am correct, from Mr. Simon, if you go home that way tonight, the lights will be on.
Oh, really? I didn't realize that.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Very much.
Since Brian didn't bring it up, the Route 30 Bridge is open. The Route 30 Bridge is open.
Mr. Cox is not with us. Mr. Simon, anything from you?
I have nothing.
Chief Nelson?
Chief Cook?
Mr. Siri is on vacation. Mr. Spink is not with us. Mr. Padilla?
Nothing at night.
Mr. Padilla, why don't you just take a minute and inform the council on the work being done by your staff out there, just real quickly? There's a project which we all approve that's been undertaken out there, Ted's staff's doing it, and it's pretty much nearing completion.
Yeah, the filter 1 and 2, replacing the piping and the fittings and the valves that were in place. We started, we're only going to do it in half the project at a time because we could take one filter off and still make good water with the other two filters. So we started last week, and we finished up with the part one of the project, so it's going well. We had an issue with the piping coming out of the filter. It wasn't aligned, and it was just starting to deteriorate, so we had to get that replaced, and we used a local contractor to do that work, and he did an outstanding job. So things are going well. We'll try and get this other part of the project going here real soon and hopefully be back online by all three filters here before Thanksgiving. If not, we're still in good shape as far as water pumpage and stuff, so it's going well.
If you've been to the meeting room out at the water plant where you looked at the tanks themselves, they replaced all that piping and stuff there. Our staff was able to do that, so they did a great job. If you get a chance, go out there and take a look at it. Thank you, Ted.
Well, this is the week for hometown holidays. It's November 17th through the 19th. The 17th is holiday bingo, that's this Thursday. Doors open at 4:00 at the Rock Falls American Legion. I know they had pre-sales. It was crazy with the amount of people. I've never seen that many people really wanting to play bingo and really excited about it. It was great, but that's the reason why I had the pre-sales. The doors do open at 4 o'clock, and I'm really hoping that everyone that is there is able to get in because it was a really good time. On the 18th, which is Friday, we have the love light ceremony at 5:30, and the Christmas walk is from 6 to 8. And then also, we, across the river, Seasonal Sights and Sounds is also on the 18th. They're having their Christmas walk from 5:00 p.m. to late, and then they'll have their tree lighting at 8. And on Saturday, I don't think we're going to have to worry about snow this year. Maybe rain, I'm hoping not, but rain we can do. On the 19th, the parade starts in Sterling at 1 o'clock, travels across the bridge into Rock Falls and ends at Merrill School, where there's going to be a Christmas party and everyone can have their picture taken with Santa. Also, I've worked with the hotels and put together a package, Home for the Holidays special, and it's not just for hometown holidays this weekend, it is also for Thanksgiving. The hotels are Country and Suites by Carlson, Days Inn, and Holiday Express and Suites. Go to visitrockfalls.com, find out the different deals that you can get through the hotels, and they're being absolutely wonderful. Most times when you have room blocks, there's a cutoff date of 30 days prior. If they have rooms available, they're going to honor that rate. You do need to call in directly and visit rockfalls.com to find out the reservation name. Most of them are Home for the Holidays. We do have Country and Suites that has a different name, so definitely call in. We also just finalized a Twin City Treasure Tour. Rock Falls Tourism is working with Black Hawk Waterway CBB, along with four businesses that are on the treasure tour, so it's not just consignment, it is also antiques. I'll be providing these to the hotels, to Diane, see if she can get them to all the major kiosks, both along 88, and hopefully some entry points into Illinois. On the Visit Rock Falls website, there is a Twin Cities Treasure Tour, and on that, you can actually click on a Google map. You can get turn-by-turn directions to all the different locations, and it also has information of all the hotels, so if you so choose, you can come to our area. You don't have to quickly go through the tour. You can spend one or two days and stay with us. We'd love to have you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Janine. Thank you, Janelle. Ward reports, Mr. Reitzel. Thank you. Mr. Logan?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Kuhlmeier?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Snow?
Yeah, just want to remind all our residents, if you haven't changed your smoke detector batteries, it's a good time to do it and just safe to feel safe at night when you're going to bed. Also too, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Schuh?
I too would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I want to congratulate Braden, State Champion, and I want to congratulate our electric department, but I'm going to let you tell everyone about it.
Mr. Kleckler?
Just a question, is there any affordable progress on the Linsfield Building project? We haven't heard anything last.
No.
They're all excited for a while.
Sorry, it's the state, we're still waiting.
The state is reviewing the intergovernmental agreement, how long that takes.
It doesn't say much for our state's legal department. They've had it for a long time.
That's it? Mr. Folsom?
I just wish everybody a good, happy Thanksgiving and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Got a couple of things, one that's an action item and that is we continue to work on the Sesquicentennial Celebration, which again, is the city's 150th birthday. That will be held July 29th through August 6th of 2017. Again, I will say it seems like a long ways away and a lot of time, but there's a lot of things to get done. Committee has been meeting. We've got a few chairman of different events now. We're continuing to move forward with events, trying to get the final, final schedule for the week done. We've got some things planned, but we don't have them finalized yet. We're working on that. We've still got time, we're working on that. So, one of the things that we're going to be doing is finishing up and doing work on a budget and as a predecessor to that, you took action last meeting to move over the $3,800 that had been sitting in an account ever since the 125th. And I approached the, spoke to the tourism committee at their last meeting and the tourism committee was very gracious. I asked them to allow us to have $20,000 to be used for the Rock Falls Sesquicentennial and that was approved by the committee and now it comes before the council for approval as well. So, there'll be a lot of costs involved. We don't have all of them figured out yet, but we're trying to have money available because we'll have things that we need to do in advance of that. We also will be doing sponsorships and stuff like that, get more money in, but the tourism gave us $20,000 put towards this event. So, would entertain a motion for the council from someone to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Kuhlmeier to approve the $20,000 transfer from tourism to the Sesquicentennial Celebration Committee's funding. Any discussions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. Recently, myself, Administrator Blackard, Chairman of Electric Committee, Mr. Shuneman, along with other electric committee members, Mr. Logan and Mr. Kuhlmeier, went down to Springfield for the annual IMEA dinner, which was held on Friday, November 4th. This is an event that they have to bring everybody that is in the electrical group that we're in together and they use a portion of that event to recognize communities that are in the electrical system down there with special recognition. In the past, the City of Rock Falls has been the proud recipient of the Generation of the Year Award, has a couple of different times and this year, although it was supposed to be somewhat of a surprise, they forgot and put it right on the agenda that we're laying on our dinner plates when we sit down at the table. But I'm very happy to report that the City of Rock Falls Municipal Electrical Agency was selected as the Municipal Electrical Agency of the Year by the IMEA. And this is reflective of the reliability factors that we have. This is reflective of the education and training that our employees get. This is reflective of the continuing education, not only our employees there, but other members of the city staff that, and that we, the things we do collectively to be able to provide quality electrical services to our residents at an affordable price. And it was very, very rewarding to be able to go forward with everybody that was down there as a whole, to receive this award from Kevin Gayden, who is the CEO, and it was a very proud moment for the City of Rock Falls and wanted to make sure there's a press release been made. I haven't seen it in the paper yet, so I don't know if the local people have gotten it yet, but there will be an article in the paper about it as well. And I want to encourage, Janelle touched on all the activities that are going on this weekend, which are many, starting with bingo. Yeah, if you've ever seen seven or eight hundred sardines packed into one can, go to the American Legion because that's what it's like. It's tremendous though to, and the other side of that is, it's, the local businesses have just really gone above and overboard even from last year in gifts and prizes and stuff that are going to be handed out there. And, you know, this helps with the Christmas holidays. It helps to recognize the businesses, the things that they're doing, to support it. It gives back to the residents of the city that support the businesses and that's important. The Love Light Tree, encourage everybody to be there for that. That takes place uptown and one of the things that wasn't mentioned that's kind of neat is that there's going to be five businesses, once the Christmas walk starts, there's going to be five businesses throughout the city where you will be able to register for a chance to win $1,000 in cash. And you can go into those stores as many times as you want to register and then at a certain given hour, which you can find out in those stores, you'll go back to the Love Light Tree area where Santa Claus will be there and a drone is going to fly in and deliver the winning person's name to Santa Claus there and then they will be the recipient of a $1,000 gift for Christmas. And then the parade. And I would remind anyone that would like to be in the parade, the parade's up and running. We do have a parade entry and if you want to be in that, we will meet at the fire station at 12 o'clock because the starting is at 1:00 and it's over Sterling, so we'll have to drive over there. So, 12 o'clock Saturday at the back parking lot of the fire station. The weather is projected to be a little bit iffy, so we'll just have to keep the eye on everything. I certainly hope that all the work that has been done by a lot of people to make this weekend a success, it usually is. It isn't called off because of this, but we'll just have to keep an eye on, see what happens. And last but not least, you know, the City of Rock Falls, all of you guys and all of our employees, we're all family and I'm sorry to report and would ask that all of you keep in your thoughts and prayers, the family of Tony Posey. Tony's sister died out in Arizona within the last couple of days and family's going through that right now and please remember Tony and his family, so. Other than that, there's nothing else to come before the council? Chair would entertain?
I move, adjourn.
That's the motion right there. Adjourn a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good weekend, everybody.